We're gonna, we're gonna create a PSA right here. Um, don't be a dick. That's it. That's the PSA. That's it. That's all it is. Wake it up, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Marky P Show. My guest today has been in this studio more times than anyone else in the history of the world. Good friend of mine. Juan Caraballo.
You said it so nice.
I, I, I was gonna call you by your nickname, but I don't think we're, uh, we're ready for that yet. How was your weekend?
Amazing. Um, the weather didn't cooperate, but when you surround yourself around good people, that doesn't matter. So we had a great time. We spent a lot of time with you, so.
You spent literally every day this weekend with me.
Every one.
Some of it I don't remember, so. Those high noons, man, will get you. Especially when you, especially when you haven't had a carb in, you know.
Oh, my goodness.
Twenty-five days.
We're almost done.
We're almost done.
Ten, ten days left.
Juan is my partner in, in, you know, cutting carbs out. The Eat the Damn Cake girls are not gonna like hearing that, cuz last time I told them that, they screamed at me. But I'm doing well. My tabs at the bar are not doing well.
You know those, uh, the kettle ones, they're not, make ultra prices apparently.
Yeah, I know.
And, uh, you know, like nine seventy-five versus three twenty-five, and you look at your tab and almost pass out a few times. It happens.
It's a mortgage payment? Literally, at the end of the night, you're like, wow, I just paid somebody's mortgage tonight. That was good.
All next month is gonna be like, where's all this money coming from? I'm just gonna check my pockets every day. Like, where did I get all this?
How did I manage to save six hundred dollars tonight? They're like, oh, well, you stopped drinking high noons, uh, seven thousand of them.
The Michelob Ultra stock price is just gonna.
It's gonna go right back through the roof. Yeah, man. The, the weekend was, uh, the weekend was fun. The weather did suck. You know, I would have liked to, you know, sit by the pool or do something like that, but.
I'm gonna steal a few seconds from the beginning of the show. Just to tell you how proud I am of you.
Thanks, man.
And I know it's hard to hear that sometimes. You're all humble and stuff, but I'm looking at your face over here. Everyone back home's listening.
Yeah, man.
Everyone's proud of you. Thank you for what you do and all the hard work you put into this.
I really appreciate that, man. I, I, I do. I don't like to hear it. Uh, I, it, it makes me feel weird, but I appreciate it.
Get real weird then.
I do appreciate it.
Cuz we love you.
Thanks, man. Well, same.
All the feels.
Dude, so, so in the news over the course of the weekend, uh, a couple weird things happened with like animals. A bat made its way onto an Air India flight. A bat. And, and they had to turn the plane around.
Yeah, that'd be a good reason for it, yeah.
Do you think so? See, I don't think so. I think that like you could just grab a bat and just hold it and be like, okay, I'll just fucking Ziploc bag it. I mean, Pete is probably gonna be real happy for that one, but like, there's gotta be a way that you can not have to turn a flight around because of a bat.
Like blankets and stuff, but then again, you catch one, you don't know how many others are on there. You don't know if snakes are gonna come out somewhere. Just go start, you, you never know.
What if it's a emotional support bat?
Did they look for a leash? You never know.
By the way, uh, Hurley is just always on it. I love this guy. He's great. He's fantastic. If it's an emotional support bat, you think it was wearing like one of those vests? Just like, they got it off like, like Amazon or something like that, and it was just like one little zip ups, like, hey, my bat. There's gotta be, okay, so there, uh, there has to be a lot of weird emotional support animals, right?
I think there's probably a decent list of things you're like, a support duck. I guess, yeah, we can, we can do that.
I love your support mallard. I've seen pigs. I've seen people, I've seen people fly with like the, what are they called? Um, uh, the small ones. What are the small pig? The teacup pigs. Teacup pigs. Like, brah. You need to take your emotional support pigeon out of here. I just don't know why they turn the plane around. Like, I think that's like, as long as the pilot's not getting messed with, I think you can just probably fly to, to destination.
Was it in the room with like?
Yeah, it was in the cabin. I mean, at that point, are you just like hoping that it bites you and you bec- become Batman?
I mean. That's, like, that's possible, sure.
I mean, it's just so weird. Like, airports are out of control right now.
Yeah, it's a different dynamic now. Uh, we're all living life a little different, but just gotta do our best. So, I mean, precautionary measures were taken and you can't really fault them for that.
But like, people, people in airports have now like actually lost their minds.
Hundred percent.
I'm sure you've seen the videos scrolling through Instagram where it's like, one person's beating the shit out of another person, and then you're like, what, what are we, what are we doing? What, just get on, the, the last place that you should be able to get, or the last place you should ever get in trouble in is an airport.
One hundred percent. Stateies everywhere.
Yeah, and it like will ruin, it'll literally ruin your life.
Can you imagine not being able to fly anywhere?
Right.
Sorry, we, we don't need your business anymore.
Right. Like, you hit the no fly, imagine being on the no fly. I thought for a little bit, because of this beard, I was gonna be on a no fly list, but, uh, you know, it is what it is.
I'm sure you've hit a few too many screenings. They're like, sir, we, we really need to check that beard.
Yeah, I have. Uh, they, they'll always, they always get me with the, you know how they like swab your hands?
Oh, for the explosive?
Explosive residue? Let me explain this to you. It's not random. I don't care what anyone says. It's not random.
They saw you get out the taxi. I'm like, yeah, that's.
TSA guy got his binoculars out. He, he actually pulls out like that thing that they golf with, you know? He's locked, that's him. That's the guy.
Planter's peanut guy, just like, yeah, we're gonna grab this guy.
That's that guy.
Britney Spears shirt. We're gonna, we're gonna take that from him.
Right. I'm like the most harmless person. Like, you've known me for a long time. Like, when I walk into an airport wearing a pair of joggers and a Britney Spears t-shirt, like, why are you stopping me? What, what are you doing? Like, I got this nine ninety-nine Britney Spears shirt on. Like, you should, you should appreciate me. I'm not trying to do anything crazy. You know, but, uh, dude, airports have been wild.
Yeah, planes are crazy. You know, you're thirty-five thousand feet up. People are a little on edge.
Yeah, that's true. And, and they probably sauced a little bit in the terminal.
You never know. Those airplane bottles, you know?
Well, how, how drunk have you been on a plane?
You know, I don't, I don't drink when I travel.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
I like to be, uh, alert and attentive with everything, so a very, very little drinking ever.
Wow, you're the complete opposite of me. I like to be the least alert.
You're just like, just let it happen. I wanna wake up in some other country and.
Yeah, pretty much. That's like, that's what happened when I went to, uh, Cancun. Like, they have a, uh, and I'm gonna butcher this word cuz I don't know how to say it. Fort Lauderdale, who I did it first try. I can't usually say it like. They have a JetBlue terminal at like the very, like, the end of the airport, and it, uh, at the terminal, it's like, you know, twenty and twenty-one. But like, right in the middle is a bar. And you're on your way to Cancun.
Yeah, I mean, pre-gaming seems like a reasonable thing to do if you're gonna take a week or two off.
I did not pregame. That was not a pregame. That was a full-fledged send.
You just weren't Cancun already.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that I went and I put my bathing suit on in the bathroom just so I felt more at home. Like, sir, you, why are you wearing a, uh, a Speedo?
Sir, we, yeah, you're, too much of your body's gonna make contact with the seat. We could need you to cover that up.
We're gonna need you to put your joggers back on, sir. Yeah, dude, uh, air, 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 airports, I mean, airplanes just in general are wild, but airports have been nuts.
I've had some pretty wild rides in planes.
I can't, I can only imagine. As a former Marine, and what you do now by donating all your time, and we will get to that, but I'm sure you've been in some wild rides.
Yeah, we, um, I mean, a lot of it was helicopters, but the.
Helicopters scare the shit out of me.
Well, listen to this. So, we're, I don't know where we're going, and I probably can't even say, but we were going from one place to the other in Iraq. And we're just tightly in there, and then hydraulic fluid starts dripping on me, and you're just like, like, is that normal? And you're looking at everyone who's like, yeah, it's normal. It's just when it stops dripping is when you have to worry. And you don't wanna hear those things when you're in the air, and you're kinda swaying to avoid direct fire, and the whole thing is, it's, it's insane.
That's just, that just made my stomach turn.
I was nauseous the whole way. I didn't, no one really, uh, no one really hurled.
Those dad jokes are really gonna hit today. That's when we shut this show down.
Shut it down. But, um, yeah, craziness with the flights. I've had, uh, planes just do quick dives cuz you hear, uh, is anyone a doctor on board? And you're like, that, I don't wanna hear that ever. And, uh, you're looking at the pilot's cabin, like, is everything, as long as they're not there, we'll get someone to safety. We're good.
Right.
And we just dropped out of the sky. I felt the, uh, pressure hit the top of my seatbelt, and you're just free falling. This guy must have been a Navy fighter pilot or something cuz we just inverted in Top Gun all the way to the ground.
I wonder how many, I wonder how many pilots, uh, like, commercial pilots are previous, like, fighter pilots, or, you know what I mean?
I feel like you could tell when it touches down, or the takeoff, when you're just full, like, looking at the.
Full send to the sky. It's like this guy, this guy I learned from watching Top Gun.
I mean, when the landing comes in hard, you're like, this guy hit a few carriers in his life. I get it.
Yeah. Um, dude, let's hop right into, uh.
Hopping in.
Let's hop right in. Uh, you were a former Marine. Let's, let's chat about what that decision was like for you to get into the Marines and, you know, how, how your career spanned.
All right, um, right out of high school, eighteen-year-old, didn't know what I wanted to do in life. I knew that being a cashier at the local food mart wasn't it. I also, I feel like I was, I don't know if I wanna call it mature, but I knew that college wasn't the next step. I knew that if I went that route, it probably wouldn't have been as successful as I wanted it to be, so I was like, all right, and then nine eleven happens, and I'm watching towers fall. I'm watching all the madness. I'm like, well, it, it's kind of like a calling thing, if you wanna go that route, but, um, after that, I went down there and signed up. Didn't even tell my mom. Sorry, mom. But I came back.
She found out eventually.
So I was like, listen, I did the thing. You know, I, I signed up to the military, and she just starts crying. I'm like, oh, God. I don't do that. I recommend you not do that.
So you recommend telling your parents first?
Telling your parents have a really good conversation about it and, uh, do it anyway.
Just don't blindside them.
Yeah, so I, I felt terrible, but, um, yeah, I went and, uh, you know, went to Camp Lejeune, third battalion, second Marines, ratio bastards. You know, I met some really good lifelong friends and, uh, four years, went to Iraq in two thousand and five, came back, thank God, and, uh, just cruised from there on out, you know, that, that service really molded who I became as a person later on in life, so I'm very thankful.
Right. That, I mean, that's, that's every, every person that I, that I know that's, you know, been a part of the armed forces has a little bit of a different aspect and look on life when they come back. You know, a few friends, I mean, you, you donate you money, time, everything to, to everyone. That's what you do. And I feel like a lot of people who go through that, the armed forces, you know, they, they come back with that sense of like needing to give back.
It definitely opens your eyes to a lot of things, especially going to war. That's one thing, but also you get mixed with all walks of life while you're on base. You know, you, there's, uh, there were twelve hundred Marines in my unit, and then before we went to Iraq, we got three hundred more. So now fifteen hundred people, fifteen hundred personalities. And, you know, I hung out a lot with kids from, uh, Tennessee, and that's all, wild child.
That's a whole nother place. They're making moonshine still, dude. Like, we don't need to do that anymore.
From the mountains. Say, hey, you want some of this? No, that's gasoline. I, I don't need to drink that. But, um, I made lifelong friends in Montana. You know, all over, I did a road trip in twenty sixteen, and I drove literally across the country and then figured it out after that.
Right.
And I didn't have to pay for a hotel once because all my military friends, like, you, you're coming here, you're coming there. Oh, just stay with this person, that person, stay with me. I was in Kusby, Oregon. Never heard of it in my life.
Me either. What, what is that?
It's a, it's a beautiful little town, and it's like.
Population one?
It was two when I came and visited, but, uh, he's like, yeah, come to Kusby, Oregon. I'll show you around town, and, uh, I was like, all right. You know, we'll, we'll do that. And it took me a little while to find it cuz it's not the most direct route, but, um, we had a blast.
This was back in MapQuest days, so you're probably reading off like a paper that you just printed out from your, from your computer. You've missed one turn, and you're like, well, I'm in Alaska. How did I get here? Well, you missed one exit, dude.
Welcome to Russia. I was like, that's not even possible.
Yeah, there's no like rerouting noise, you know? Like, you get like Google Maps, and it's like, rerouting. You're like, no, none of that with pen and paper. That's, that's cool, though. What was your, what's been your favorite place to travel over the course of that road trip?
Oh, boy. Um, there's a lot of little, I'm, I'm gonna have to say the California coast. Cuz once I, I broke into California and you're on that coastline, you see the water.
Yeah, PCH, right. It's called the Pacific Coast Highway.
It was amazing. I wish that on everybody to be able to see that.
That's cool.
And you, you know, the elevation changes, so you'll be at the beach, and I stopped, you know, kinda dunked my feet in cuz I came from Boston, so water to water, I thought that was the coolest thing ever.
Yeah.
And, um, then you hit the mountains and eventually hit like the Redwood Forest, and that was cool. I went there, drove through a tree, which I thought was awesome.
You just totaled your car. You just, just leave that in. I just tried, drove straight through a tree. Nah, I think they cut the, they cut the notches out.
I, I'm not sure that.
He didn't drive into a tree, ladies and gentlemen. He drove, he drove actually through it.
But, um, yeah, I wish that on everyone to just be able to have time to go out and travel. I know that's not always possible, but I had the chance and I had to do it, or else I would have never done it.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's true. I love to travel, man. Traveling's, I, I have the travel bug. We haven't been able to do that for like fifteen months. So the second that I, I'm able to, uh, you know, sprint around.
And.
I'm out.
Coming here, I mean, even today, it's like the pike is kinda back to its own thing. I remember when this all started and you couldn't find a car on the bike.
Literally.
And you just looked down. It was like miles of nothing, and I'm like, I don't mind this either, you know?
It was straight up zombie land on the highway.
Everywhere. And, uh, it was just nice to just cruise and no one cutting you off or flipping you to bird or something like that.
Yeah. Shout out to the guy today that flipped us off for driving as fast as he possibly could.
He was behind me. There was cars directly in front of me, and he's flashing.
That's the worst.
Me out of the way so we can occupy the same space. I'm going at the same speed. Made no sense.
We're gonna, we're gonna create a PSA right here. Um, don't be a dick. That's it. That's the PSA. That's it. That's all it is. You know? Don't drive like an idiot. Like, there's other people on the road. I hate that. I hate that. That's one of my, that's one of my pet peeves. We had the Susan segment. We did pet peeves. And I didn't add that. It was, it was bar pet peeves, but one of my pet peeves is people that just like are not cognizant when they're driving.
Like, we're all out there together, and so I don't move out the way cuz there's no reason for me to.
There was also no place for you to go.
I was like, I don't, I didn't know what he wanted me to do. We don't have flying cars yet, sir.
He wants you to pull onto the shoulder. Like, come on, bro.
And then he takes off and he creates a dangerous environment for everyone else, just cutting everybody off.
Like I was driving like a madman.
It was just, didn't make sense.
PSA.
We could do better than that.
Don't be a dick. And now a word from our sponsor, Manscaped. Use code BIGNIGHT. You get twenty percent off and free shipping. Father's Day is right around the corner. Give all the dads, fathers, or poppies in your life a clean shave down below. I'm a poppy. I use it. I got a dad, might buy him one. You should definitely get the man in your life one, or the woman in your life one. I mean, Mother's Day was last month, I think, but these are fantastic products. Use code twenty, use code BIGNIGHT. You get twenty percent off and free shipping. Now, back to the show. Um, so still, still into the, uh, you know, the Marines talk and like, uh, stuff like that. I don't know if you heard about this, but fourteen UFOs.
They're coming.
Surrounded a stealth, a stealth, stealth, that's stealth with an F, uh, stealth naval ship. Did you see that?
I didn't.
It's like a radar, and they're talking about, they're like, this thing's doing a hundred and fifty-eight knots. What is it? Literally, like, coming from the government. The government's like, yeah, that was real. Like, oh, okay.
We should have a conversation about.
Yeah, we need to, like, I talk, I've talked about this on so many of the podcasts, and you've been here for a couple where I bring up aliens, cuz I can't help it. But like, can we talk about this for a second? What do you do in that situation? Like, if you're, if you're, you're in a helicopter and you're going from one spot to another in Afghanistan.
That's what they need. While they're doing this, I just.
While you have, while you have hydraulic fluid dripping all over you. Yeah, what do you, like, what do you do? Do you just crap your pants? I think, I think you just, I don't think you have a choice. You have to just, I think you just grab a parachute and you just fucking jump out. Like, I gotta get out of this.
I'm gonna take my chances.
Like, what are, what are we doing here? They're not even denying it anymore, Juan.
I, I think that's good. I mean, they probably know a lot more than they're letting on, but a little transparency would be nice for them.
Just a li- a little, just a little more. Not like, yeah, this UFO.
Well, I mean, how big the universe is, and you know, there's bound to be something living out there, so.
Right.
If they told us a little more about what they knew, that'd be great.
You think that we're ready for that?
I think a lot of people, I think so. Cuz some people were just, they've been saying it all along, yeah. There's aliens, absolutely. Roswell, and, you know, those people are believers. And there's others that are like, ah, I don't know. And then you show them a little proof, and they're just, they're just gonna tell you it's crap anyway, so what do you do? So.
But then the government goes, yeah.
Yeah, that's them.
That's.
My buddy Ricky, that's it. Yeah. Went to go get some Starbucks. He'll be back.
They have, they have names for all the, all the aliens. They're just like, yeah, that's George. He's just, you know.
Oh, the one with the peace sign on the next of his orb? Yeah, that's, that's, that's Hurley.
Yeah, that's, that's Hurley floating around. Hurley might actually be an alien. But like, what do you do? Like, if, if you encountered an alien while you were in the Marines, do you just start, do you just start firing?
I, I don't know. I don't have an answer. It's one of those like, ah, do I, do I just engage, or hopefully, you know, you're trying to make some community, communication. That's the the proper answer, you know, try to see what it's all about, but probably if we don't know what's out there and.
You might take a couple of pop shots at it.
And I was like, see how he responds to a couple of these poppers.
Couple, a couple of these little zingers going by. Um, enough about aliens. Like, I could talk about it. I'm gonna have a whole show, me and Hurley, cuz he's an alien, but we're gonna talk about aliens for an hour and forty minutes. So you, you dedicated, after you come back from the Marines, you, you've dedicated your entire life essentially to helping people. Giving back. Um, you're part of Team Rubicon?
Yes.
Team Rubicon, shout out to them, which is incredible what you guys do. If you wanna explain a little bit of that.
Yeah, so when I left the military, and I, I don't feel so ashamed to say this, but when I left the military, and I think a lot of servicemembers sort of feel this, not a lot talk about it, but I was lost. You know, I, I had a job right out of the military. Very thankful for that. But, um, I went from Marine Corps to Mass Mutual, which we share a floor with.
Right.
And it was, you know, shooting rifles to general ledger balances. And, you know, you hear zero to sixty all the time, but that was sixty to break wall, like.
Right.
So.
That was sixty to redwood tree.
So, um, I, I thought a lot about, you know, what I wanted to do in life, and Mass Mutual had a lot of volunteer opportunities with like, um, Habitat for Humanity, and, um, United Way was a big, you know, component of that, so I, I was still giving back, but I was like, you know, still not sure what life meant to me and what my kinda zone was, so.
Right, you were still, you were still fairly young.
Yeah, I was, you know, I was.
Twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four, something like that.
Yeah.
And, um, the opportunity came to join the police academy. I joined, and unfortunately, week seven blew out my knee. I, uh, was it sprained my MCL and fractured my tibia. Terrible.
That'll, that'll end that.
So it took the, you know, the wind out of my sails, and I was pretty bent out of shape about it. I really wanna, I felt that that was a bigger platform for me to give back. That's what I wanted to do, get back to my community. So after that, um, I mean, I was walking with a limp. I was like, whoa, you know, I'm broken now. What do I do now? And, uh, that's kind of where the road trip came in. It was like, let me just have a zen moment and just go out there, figure things out. And when I came back, still kinda lost. So I moved to Prague. So I left the country.
I just got up and dipped.
So I, I felt that would give me added perspective as to what life is to other people and what that could mean to me. So I was still searching for something.
Right.
So, um, I had my time at Prague, had a great time. Uh, me and my friend Dana were out there just living life up, just trying to figure things out. Come back.
Drinking one-dollar beers.
One, like forty-cent beers. If you ever go to Prague, everyone just go to Prague when they open up. It's a great place. I lived off a thousand dollars a month. Like, I lived very well off a thousand dollars a month. Groceries, a week worth of groceries is less than twenty bucks. And that's like getting everything I want, you know?
Right. That's wild.
So I do the Prague thing. I come back and I'm still lost, and I go to Uno's, uh, downtown Springfield. Shout out to Kevin. And, um, my friend was like, hey, she kinda figured me out. She knows me very well, Mel. And she was like, um, I, I know this place, or this group called Team Rubicon. You know, you might wanna check them out. You know, it's a service group, disaster relief. I think you'd be perfect for it. I was like, I never heard of Team Rubicon. Everyone thinks Jeep. I thought Jeep. And.
Yeah, same.
So, um, I looked them up. I love their message. You know, a, a couple of military fellows and a doctor went out there to Haiti after the earthquake, and they snuck into the country to help. Can you imagine wanting to give back so much? You sneak in the country just to help?
That's incredible.
So, uh, Jake Wood is his name, and he headed it, and now it's a big organization, but I looked it up, loved the message. Uh, signed up. Two weeks later, I'm in Puerto Rico. And, uh, fun fact, my, I still have family in Puerto Rico. So my mother was like, yeah, they're over here, you know, so I asked the incident commander, hey, can, you mind if I visit them? He's like, absolutely. You know, we just went through a disaster. Let's help them out. So I go over there. And I'm thinking family reunion, didn't think anything else. So I go there, we have, oh my God, I haven't seen you in twenty years and this and that. So they're like, you want food? I'm like, Puerto Rican always feeding you. Just force feeding the face.
Yes, they are.
So I'm like, all right, yeah, I'll take some food. So I sit down, and we're in the darkness. I'm like, oh, oh, no. And she's like, you want a water? I'm like, sure. I'd love some water. She reaches, you know, the, like, the forty-eight packs or whatever. She reaches in there, there's five left. And she puts it on the table. I'm like, oh my God, I, I didn't bring any food or water to my own family. I'm like, oh, I, like, I didn't, I don't know. I just wasn't thinking. So I go back, tell the incident commander, it's like, listen, I really messed up, man. I didn't bring any food or water to my own family. He's like, you gotta make that right, man. So what does he do? He's like, you're, take a few minutes in the morning, leave early before everyone, pack your truck with all the food and water you want. And, uh, take it to your family.
Correct. They were, they were just going through that.
Yeah, they were, five water bottles left. I felt like the biggest piece of crap. So, um, before that conversation was over, other people were like, hey, you, you know, you mind if I come along? Hey, you might have, we had six trucks come, to come to my aunt's house.
That's awesome.
And, uh, we loaded her up with food and water, but we also drove down the street and, you know, hit every house on the way out until we were out. So I thought, yeah, early on I messed up, but then later, you know, I made it right.
Made it right.
And ever since then, we've, I've been, you know, to, uh, Panama City, Florida. They got hit very hard by hurricane. We went to Houston to rebuild a hundred houses over a two-year time period. That was very awesome. And it's just, every time I do a deployment like that, I think of my mother and how I would want people to treat my mother in that situation. I think that kinda puts everything in perspective. This lady, uh, in Houston saying, I lived in this house for fifty years. You know, you really wanna put her back in that house.
Yeah.
And, um, you know.
That's where her memories are. That's where her, her whole life, life has been.
So we, we do that, and it's just fulfilling, but it also takes a toll sometimes cuz you don't, you don't get to build the whole house in one session. Even if you stayed there two weeks, you can't rebuild the whole house. But that's where the team work comes in, and other people take off or take up what you left there and make it right. And a few weeks later, you'll get a message saying the house is finished. You see the finished product. You see you're happy, you know, it, it just makes you feel really good to give back.
Yeah. How, how many, how many deployments have you been on, do you know, off the top of your head? I think we, we have another team member here as well.
Yeah, we do. I don't know. It's, it's either in the teens or low twenties. I don't know.
That's a lot.
But I, I did start in mass. Well, my first deployment was in, well, the third deployment was in mass, and, um, just a microburst hitting around Webster or something like that. We helped a Navy veteran out. So sometimes you go wicked far. You know, we were in, uh, the Bahamas, and that, that was a two-week session and very hot and stuff, but sometimes you're down the street, you know?
Right.
I mean, we just hit the ten-year anniversary of the hurricane, or the tornado that ripped through Springfield and half of the state. So I was out there with the chainsaw, my friend Barnaby, and we were making things right.
I, I, I trust any person named Barnaby that uses a chainsaw.
He's awesome.
That's it.
He just.
Like, if your name is Barnaby and you don't have a chainsaw, you need to change your name. Simple. That's it.
Great person, but you know, it's always, you, you wanna know what you can do to help, and, uh, it's always been like my mother's motto. She, she would give no matter what, money, clothing, whatever it was. Like, she, you know, I got it from her, so it's just, you know, charity starts at home. Frank Daly told me that.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, you just gotta give to the people. Do what you can when you can.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what you've, I mean, for the length of our friendship, I've only known you to give. That's what you do. Like, that's your, that is who you are as a human. Um, with that being said, you are running for city council in Springfield.
I sure am.
You are. And, uh, you, you have a kickoff event a couple of days. By the time this airs, it'll be one day.
One day.
So, look, talk to me a little bit about, you know, what made you want to throw your hat in the ring to become city council member?
I feel it's just a natural progression. So I've been doing this Team Rubicon thing for like almost four years now, and I've been through all points of the earth, just giving back, and the, the level of disasters were just crazy. But it never stopped, you know, well, it's kind of in your heart to just keep going and get these people back to normal life. So I feel that, like Frank said, you know, charity starts at home. I've done a lot in the area. I've, Rain Soup Kitchen was a big one there in the pandemic. They needed help cuz the volunteers couldn't go. I, you know, clean up trash and things like that.
Yeah, you, you spend, you spend a lot of your, your time on the weekends when I'm hungover. You spend the time cleaning up the city.
And in the early hours, when people are nursing their hangovers, I guess, uh,
Like me.
I'll be out there just with a trash bag and, you know, just hit a few streets up, make things look a little better. But I feel that running for city council will give me a bigger platform to be able to properly give back to the city. And, uh, that's what I'm going after, and I, you know, I'm passionate about it. My record speaks for itself. It's just time to bring home and, you know, build something.
Yeah, I mean, so what, I, I know that there's like talking points that you wanna, that you run on, and, um, what, what are some things that you want to bring to the city from your end if you are elected?
So I give back. I love giving back, and, uh, a lot of people that we deal with are lower-income individuals or veterans. And, um, there, there's a lot of times where you come to people that are on fixed incomes, and they're really doing the best they can, but you know, when they get hit by a, a car bill or something like that, or their house needs something, they're on such a fixed income, they can't necessarily do that.
Right.
So we, we have a Community Preservations Act that I wanna tap into that can help financially, and, you know, start like a vetting process[1793.73] And you know, start like a vetting process and try to get people back into what I would consider, you know, a proper home, something that doesn't need repair anymore. Like uh, someone that would spend thirty years, that's just a thirty year job in Springfield. And they're retired, maybe, you know, they didn't put aside the money they want to. Maybe, you know, they've just been giving back so much that, you know, keeping something for themselves wasn't really a top priority and now it is. So having that fixed income, if I, if something happens, if my car dies, now what do I do?
Right.
Or if I, if something's wrong with the house and you need to get it fixed or else, you know, people will say it's a blight in the neighborhood and then you go down that path and. You know, it's just a bad situation, so. We can help them, we have, we have the means to help them and we should.
Yeah.
And uh, veterans, veterans for some. Sometimes veterans, they just don't know what they don't know. So when they leave the military and I, same with me, I left, didn't exactly know, like, they were talking about benefits and this and that, had no idea. They do their best to kind of separate you and leave you in good standing, but there's just so much out there that no one really drilled down for me. So now that I know a little more, I try to contact other veterans that might need help and try to bridge that gap.
Right.
So I feel we can do a better job doing that and not just kind of throw them to the wolves, so to speak. Uh, another thing is uh, police training, I mean, I am a product of training, time, you know, time and time again. Until I got everything down and um, I feel that there's. A little more we can do with dealing with mental health issues, I'm not sure we fully understand what we're dealing with, with like someone with autism. That you can't necessarily go there and, you know, voice, you know, how they're, project your voice and try to get control of the situation or. If you touch them, you know, that something might happen, so there's a little, you know, we can always train to get better.
Right, that's, training is key.
And uh, uh, the last, the last talking point I wanted to do was uh. Like a tax exemption for people who live within the city and own property within the city. So if I own a house in Springfield and I own a duplex that ran out, I have a little extra equity to keep everything, you know, going well there.
Right.
If I lived in Boston and New York and I own properties there, just because it, you know, property is cheap or whatever had, you know, got me there. I live in Boston and New York, I don't really.
Care.
I just kind of.
Right.
You send me the check every month and. I don't care.
Yeah, you let the house go to disrepair.
And you don't know who's living there, you know, they could be whoever, and now you're creating a situation, so. I feel that having the person live there and own property there, I think that's worth something.
Yeah, incentivize, incentivize people to, you know, live in Springfield, build in Springfield. Uh, I, I love that, I think that's fantastic, because you're right, there's so many people have rental properties and they, you know, you have a lot of money, like you said, you're in New York, you have a lot of money, where, where can you buy a bunch of properties? You know, lo- lower income cities, you know, and, and then you see what happens there, that, you know, the houses go into disrepair and. They don't care about it, but I, I think that's, I think that's an awesome initiative, man, keep people in the city, you know, grow the city. I, I. Make the city back what it once, once used to be, man, like.
I mean, I'm a product of the city, uh, Central High School alum.
Same.
Golden Eagles right here.
Shout out to both of us.
Absolutely, and um, you know, I, I believe in the city, I mean, they created us, so.
Yeah.
And.
Couple legends.
Uh, you know, we, we have fun with it, but I, I do love Springfield, a lot of firsts there, a lot of history. And um, you know, I just want to do my part to help it, you know, progress, so. I'm gonna throw my hat in the ring and see what happens.
Crazy, man, you just want to chuck your hat right into the ring of politics, that's just, I want to be as far. Uh, I'm, I, I support you and I obviously will support you as much as I possibly can, but politics, man, whoo, I'm not, I'm not touching. I'm gonna wear, I'm gonna wear a sport coat to your event and then the second nobody's looking, I'm taking that thing right off, I'm, I'm just gonna go just black t-shirt, black jeans, you know, you know the vibes. But yeah, politics, man, that's a, that's a wild game.
It's, it's rough, it's gonna be a long road, but. In my mind, like the very worst that can happen is, okay, maybe I don't get elected and what do I do? I keep giving back.
Right, yeah, you're gonna give back regardless.
I'm just gonna go to another state that had a tornado, hurricane, flood, and I'm just gonna keep giving back and uh, you know, give it a good go the next time, I don't know.
Right.
I'm just gonna try to keep hitting tears until, you know, I'm just giving back to everyone.
Just, just every single person. Juan is, you're, you're just gonna have a stamp on everybody's house, like Juan has given back to me today, I mean, just, just for instance today, like you literally paid it forward, I mean, backwards, but. At Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
You know, we get coffees and you bought the person behind this order, like. It's, it's, it's the thoughtless, or not, yeah, it's thoughtless, like you did it, right, that's the word, thoughtless? Thoughtless, if somebody does something really good without having to think about it. Well, somebody can, you'll figure it, but you, you did it like just out of pure instinct, you didn't like. Oh, hey, should I buy this guy coffee? You're just like, hey, just buy, uh, I'll take that person's order behind me. Like, nobody thinks about that shit anymore, everybody just thinks about themselves, you know, in a sense of team and what you do. I mean, it's, you know, hopefully you win, then we get to a massive ripper.
That would be amazing, and then I just, on one end, like I, I think at the end of the day, I just don't, I have it in my mind, I don't want to let anyone down. And I know that's, that's a hard, that's a lot of weight to put on your shoulders, because you're not gonna please everyone, you know, it's.
Right.
That's just the thing, that's, you can't do it.
Right.
But I still want to strive for that, you know, nine, nine point nine percent.
Right.
Approval rating.
Yeah.
But um, I just need, I just want to be on the next platform to give to people and uh, the people who know me get it. But the people who don't know me, like, you know, they'll hear, hopefully they hear this podcast, I'm definitely gonna share it until it falls off the planet. But um, you know, hopefully they can hear the message and resonate with it and say, hey, that's a good guy, that's someone I would back, you know?
Right.
I would love it.
And if somebody doesn't want to back you, I think that they're just mentally out of control.
I mean.
Like if you sit, if somebody sat down with you for five minutes and had a conversation, just give them five minutes.
Give me a coffee.
I think, yeah, give me, yeah.
Coffee's worth the time.
Right.
Don't burn the roof of your mouth and I will blow your mind.
I'll be, yeah, that's it, I'll spring the heat, but yeah, I mean, dude, I think what you're doing is super commendable, I mean.
Just, I, I remember when, we grew up poor in Springfield.
Yeah.
We were definitely a food stamp family, so I remember when I didn't have much and I don't want, if I can help someone else. You know, eat that day or fix a roof or build a house, you know?
Right.
Like we've done that, if I can help someone's grandma, you know, get back into her fifty year, you know, she's been there fifty years, I, I would love that, it makes, it just. Makes you feel so much better.
Agreed, it makes me feel better and I'm just, I, I don't have a house and I have nothing for you to give me, except we ride in together. Um, yeah, no, dude, I'm really proud of you and, you know, on behalf of literally our whole entire friend group and, you know, families and stuff, we're all, we're all super proud of you. And uh, you know, we hope that you, you know, command those votes and people come out and.
Fingers crossed. Speaking about friend groups, though, how lucky did we get with our friend group?
Oh yeah, they're all animals.
Amazing is our group of friends.
They're all, they're all, they're all crazy.
Shout out to all of you, honey.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that they all, you know, we all kind of level up together, you know?
It's a beautiful thing, a lot of support.
Lot of support.
And no one's trying to really flex on anyone else, everyone's doing their own thing, they have their own thing, so.
Yep.
Very happy for a whole group.
Yeah, we're, we're out of control, though, we, we should be stopped at some point. So we come to the point in the show where the Susan segment.
Susan.
The Susan segment, we love Susan.
Love Susan.
Um, I, I don't know what Hurley's doing, Hurley is, is filming, he's trying to film himself, I think, I think he's trying to. Hurley, Hurley was on the camera, Hurley was on a camera last week on a different podcast and now he just wants the camera on him at all times, so he's fixing a camera, just kidding. Just, just shitting on Hurley, um, so the Susan segment, Hurley, feel free to say hello to everyone.
Yo, yo, yo.
There he is, there he is, there he is.
The world famous.
The world famous Hurley, he actually owns the surf brand.
That's me, I am Hurley.
Imagine, imagine he goes from being like a gajillionaire to like, I'm the producer of the Marky P Show, I also own a Quicksilver, whatever that old brand was. I own Paxson, alright, you guys ready?
I hope so.
Alright.
Susan throws, throws some curveballs sometimes.
Um, what's something simple that makes you really happy?
Giving back, all it takes is for me to show up and start sweating.
But yeah, so sweat.
Sweat, blood and tears.
You put sweat equity makes you happy. I like that.
I felt that was like, get me.
I literally feel like any answer after this is just gonna be.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
And Juan says giving back, I'm, I'll say like sunsets and now I'm the asshole.
No. I, I love sunsets.
Yeah.
I, I also, I mean, I would say that I like sunrises, but I'm never up early enough to uh, be a part of a sunrise. That's when I'm usually like going to bed, like just around that five o'clock time where nothing good happens, but the sun's coming up. Um, somehow, you guys just put me on the spot, she actually just sent me these a little while ago, so I haven't even had time to think about my answer.
Perfect.
Um, what's something that makes me really happy? Uh, uh, chicken wings. And beer? Yeah. You guys, see now I, now I'm just like, now I'm just like the fat alcoholic, it's like, what makes you happy? Uh, being alcoholic. Juan's giving back, you're doing cute shit. I'm, I'm doing absolutely nothing. Um, the second one is, who is your celebrity hall pass?
Uh, I might have to take a pass on that one.
I mean, mine's very easy, like you can, you can just call it crush, who's your celebrity crush?
So yeah, we'll do crush, uh, Anne Hathaway.
Anne Hathaway, wasn't she, she was Catwoman, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, god, I remember that, that was fantastic.
Mine's a little more nuanced, but I've had this brewing for a long time, her name is Alicia Vikander.
Wow, um, how do we see her?
What do you mean?
Can you pull it up somehow?
Pull it up on.
Yeah, you think of yours, I'll pull her up.
Oh, I know mine, mine is very easy, because I talk about her literally like three days a week. Jennifer Lawrence, dude, you kidding me? Absolute rocket, beautiful. Alright, we're looking, we're looking, Hurley, Hurley pulled it up, we're looking, we're looking, we're looking. Can you blow that up a little bit? She's wearing, she's at the Golden Globes right now, she's wearing a yellow dress, wow, she's like naturally gorgeous.
Uh, she was Laura Croft in the new Tomb Raider, so not.
Oh, that, that's perfect.
Not, um.
I'm a big video game guy, so Laura Croft and I.
And then she was uh, the robot in this movie Ex Machina.
Oh, oh my god, yeah, that was her, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Wow, why did I not, I, I feel like I just never knew her name and her name is just wild.
She's the love of my life, she's with Michael Fassbender.
Oh man, dude, she is beautiful, yeah, whoever, whoever's listening to this should look this girl up, she is just.
No, she's mine, don't look her up.
She is just naturally gorgeous, that's good for you, Hurley, you've got good taste, bud. Jeez, um. What song do you wish you had written? I know mine, I know mine, very topical.
These are, these are great questions.
I know, Susan, Susan always sends the heat.
Oh man.
You don't, you don't got one?
I'm gonna need to say.
I got one, I mean, Hurley's like, I write songs for, I write songs for a living, he's just gonna flex super hardness right now, Hurley, get it.
No, I, I actually don't have, you go first, Mark.
Alright, I mean, what, what song do we just listen to before the podcast started? I'm going full MGK.
Okay.
Guitar, Pink Guitar, I might even do my nails.
That, that might even get you Megan Fox, maybe that's the reason why.
I mean, hey, you know, my ex's best friend is a vibe song. So good. I sing it in my head, it literally lives rent free right now, it's just, it's just floating around on repeat.
That's crazy.
Yeah, I love it, makes me happy, I don't know why.
Came out in a whole album, right?
Yeah.
Is that like the only good song?
Not Love Race, the one he just drops is pretty good.
Okay.
But um, I wasn't necessarily on the MGK punk Blink One Eight Two thing in the beginning, I was just like. Ah, this seems kind of disingenuous and corny, but then I was just like, you know what? He changed his whole, he changed his entire look, he changed his entire like demeanor. Now he's singing punk rock songs, I'm like, lock, just lock me in, just lock me in. You got one?
I s- we, we came up in a, an age of a lot of really good music, so that's toughy.
I mean, you could talk rap, you could, you could have figured a rap song out.
Like you, you could, if you take MGK, I'm taking Eminem then.
Yeah, that's fine, you can have all the.
So we can just battle the rest of our lives.
We're just gonna battle.
All the way down the pike, we're just ripping lines.
I'm just singing songs about ex-girlfriends and stuff.
Oh, I don't have a specific song, but I feel like you probably could just pull any Drake song out of a hat and. I mean, that's a simple answer, just can you imagine, just your song gets played at the club and just immediately just.
Yeah.
Lights it up.
I mean.
Like, that's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, Drake just, Drake just doesn't know how to not make hits.
I know.
Doesn't matter what he does, it's just always a hit.
Yeah.
This dude could sing the alphabet song and he'd be like, whoa, number one.
He could sneeze right into a microphone, just sneeze and just people just like lose their minds.
Yeah, Drake. Yeah, I mean, I think those are good answers.
Okay.
Think so, I don't have, I don't have to fire either one of you, I guess. You guys just, just made it by.
Just made it.
Um. What makes you feel successful? Susan went deep on these. She went deep, I, 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 I can give mine if you guys need a second, I know yours.
What's that?
You're gonna say, give him back.
Well, it's just the happiness of the people around me.
That's true. Yeah.
If everyone in the group's happy and we're just like, dude, that's successful.
Yeah.
You know?
Success, I think success is, is what you, what you make it, right? Some, some people, success is having a million dollars or a billion dollars, we talked about that. You said that if you had a billion dollars, you'd make sure that you gave it all away.
I'd spend my whole life giving to other people.
I would be out, I would be, if somebody was just like, here's a billion dollars, do what you want with it, I am literally gonna live in a underwater bungalow, I'm not even gonna have it above water, I want to be in an underwater bungalow in Bali, just chilling. Just with stacks of cash, I'm not giving anybody, no, I'm just kidding.
I feel if we.
I'm just counteracting everything Juan says, Juan's like, I'm giving everything away and I'm like, no.
And I'm taking it all.
I'm keeping it, yeah.
My yacht's gonna be sick.
Give me what you don't want.
We get it at the same day and I'm just trying to find charities and you're taking off in a helicopter, I'm like, okay.
It's like Marky P just left on a Gulfstream. What? Um, yeah, I think success is what you make it, you know, whether it's, whether it's giving back your time or, you know, creating a successful company. Whatever, whatever that goal is, right, I, but I think for me, a lot of what makes me feel successful is the people that are around me that level up. You know, if you and your friends are all leveling up at the same time, I think that's success.
And it, it also doesn't have to be stagnant, it could always change, like, back in the day, I, I wanted good clothes, I got good clothes, you know? Now I, I bought a house in October.
Yeah.
Never did I think I'd get a house and I'm like, oh, I bought a house, cool, but it's one of those, now my next one's getting a, a car, a decent car.
Yeah.
Mine's two hundred plus thousand miles, so, you know, we're, we're, we're straining the, the time belt, but uh, it's just, it always moves. And you know, success, I love people around me leveling up, like you said, and it's a beautiful thing, you just have to support all your, all your friends, they need your support.
Agreed, I agree.
Um, yeah, I guess, I li- I like what your answer was, Mark, um, I think it's a matter of like being able to look back at. Your life over a certain period of time, whether it's like your entire life or maybe just the past year or even the past week and just being able to see progress. Whether it be personal, professional or anything else and just the, and just being able to take advantage of like all the time you have in the day. And you're not just like, you know, like, for example, over the course of this pandemic, I was working on a lot of music and, you know, trying to grow myself professionally.
While you're there, actually, shout, shout your Instagram out, it's, you're a fantastic musician.
Thank you.
So shout your Instagram out.
Hurley Music, H R L Y Music.
Now continue.
So yeah, I was, I was really working on getting better at that, um, I was, you know, watching YouTube videos, working on myself, networking with a bunch of people. But I know there was also a certain time in this pandemic where a bunch of people were just kind of like. You know, stuck and didn't really know what to do, so they just reverted to like, you know, staying in bed, watching Netflix all day, which is fine within reason, but I also think. There comes a time where you gotta, you gotta start, you know, bedding yourself so you can look back on this past year and be like, yeah, I got, I got better this year.
That's a great way to put it, man, that's a great, great mindset to have too.
Yeah.
And your music is fire.
Thank you.
So, and I'm, I'm, I'm fully expecting that your next cover be what we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
And I'll be tagged, and Juan will be tagged as well.
Yes.
Um, last one, what is your favorite Italian food?
Oh my god. Oh boy, um.
And, and I'm bringing this up because.
Cause we're about to.
We're about to, we're about to.
Go nuts.
Yeah, on the tenth, on the tenth, Juan and I can eat pasta.
I, I would have to say pasta. I mean, it comes in so many different shapes and sizes.
What kind though? Is there, there's gotta be like a, a dish, like a.
So I, for the longest time, fettuccine Alfredo.
Okay.
Has always been my jam, you know, broccoli chicken in there.
Oh yeah.[1649.78]